... proclamation, October 1, 2018, for Mayor Jeff Shelkey, Boy Scouts. Ordinance 18-61, amending the land use map of the Batavia Comprehensive Plan for Property located at 2401 Hawks Drive and 37 West 405 and 37 West 475 Fabian Parkway and Janet Lane right-of-way. Resolution 18-109-R, Resolution 18-109-R, ownership of the Batavia Dam. I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second.
Move by Alderman Atack, second by Alderman McFadden for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion?
Your Honor.
Alderman Brown.
Just one comment. One item on the agenda tonight is, or on this consent agenda, is the Resolution 18-109-R, where we acknowledge that the city of Batavia owns the dam. And I just want to say that I'm going to support this because we've done everything we can possibly do to over, under, look under every rock and every stone there is to try to prove that we do not own this dam. But through legal advice, we've been advised that we do. So I just want to say that I'm very happy that in this resolution, this one paragraph is in here where it says, whereas, at a later date, the city attempted to convey the new dam to the state pursuant to ordinance 94-110, passed on December 5, 1994. However, no evidence exists that the deed was ever recorded to affect, however you say that word, the conveyance of the new dam to the state, or that the state was willing to accept ownership of the new dam. So that settles it. The dust has been settled out on this now, and I think we're, through this passage, we're going to acknowledge that we do own the dam, so now we can take further steps moving forward as to how we're going to protect our Riverwalk.
Yeah, I would thank you for bringing that up. I'd just like to add that I do not anticipate, nor do I see any potential for the state of Illinois to step in now or at any time in the future, given its financial plight, to do anything about that dam. And so I certainly, I myself would not be in support of any activity in which we would attempt to tax the citizens of Batavia for any action regarding that dam as far as replacing it or repairing it. So that's just where I think the thing stands right now. Maybe a future city council and mayor may want to do something differently, but right now, I would have a hard time trying to tell anybody that we should be spending taxpayer money to repair that dam, of which it has apparently no viable purpose up there, other than it was originally put in in 1870s originally to divert water underneath factories and to create the second channel of the river, which is, the second channel of which has been removed largely. And as we know, we had a meeting earlier this year with the Batavia Park District, and I think it was a consensus between the city and the park district that if we were going to do anything, we wanted to take actions and steps to save the depot pond. And that's probably potentially achievable by putting a, some kind of a walkway across that will separate the river from the depot pond and let people bike and walk across that area and maybe pump a little water out of the river every day to put it in the pond to maintain its level. So I would, if somebody were to ask me, what's the future of this thing, that's where I would tell you the future is. And as you and I all also know, that dam has, you know, it's a, it can be a problematic situation for us up there because specifically, and I have all, number of the members of the fire department standing in the back of the room, that's a very difficult location to access with emergency equipment and try to, you know, effectuate some rescue. If we ever tried to put our ladder truck out there, I suppose we could maybe do it, but it would be a very difficult placement to try to put the bucket on top of the water and lift somebody out of there. I mean, it's just in a very bad place from a lot of different perspectives, and that's one of them. So I don't know if I think that dam has any bright future, other than probably it either will self-destruct itself, or it'll fall out, or at some future date, it will come out one way or another, so. Anybody else want to make any comments about that? Thank you. Okay, we have a motion second then for approval of the consent agenda?
Yep.
Kirk, call the rule.
Atack?
Aye.
Chanet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Ure?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Thirteen yes, no, no's one absent. Okay, moving to item six, matters from the public for items not on the agenda. Do we have anybody this evening? You come up and use your, give us your name and address, please, and your comments?
Good evening. My name is Charlie Corey. I live at 1311 Town Avenue, Batavia. I'm here just to discuss the telecast of the council meetings on BATV. I find it very important for me to be able to watch that because I don't come to every council meeting, and I like to know what's going on in my city. So with that said, my questions and comments are being addressed tonight to the council chairperson, so I can deal with just one person on the questions and answers. My first question requires a simple yes or no answer. Is the cost of recording and broadcasting the council meetings on BATV included in the city's operating budget?
I don't... Wendy, or anybody got an answer to that one? I don't think there's much cost to us.
My understanding, I'm sorry. As a pardon. It's contract with the city. Anyone who's providing cable services within the city limits pays a franchise fee that funds our public access television station.
It pays for the public access, so we're not...
So therefore, we're not paying any money, the taxpayers aren't, for the, for the broad, recording and broadcasting?
Yeah, there is a fee that, you know, if some, if BATV goes out and does something, they can charge a fee for their broadcast of an event or...
Okay.
Something like that, and that money goes in to help pay for it.
Okay. Second question is, what is the purpose of broadcasting council meetings on BATV, Comcast Channel 10? What's the purpose?
To keep the public advised and informed. We've been doing this since about 1981.
I agree with that. That's, I've got that answer myself. To allow the citizens to know and understand what's happening in the city government, or i.e., transparency, so we can understand what you folks are doing. My third question requires only a yes or no answer. I'm trying to keep this simple. Is there a functional, movable slash adjustable microphone in front of each council member and speaker? I ask this question because when I watch council meetings on BATV, the speaker's comments are very often not clear, and from an audible perspective, very often not understandable. I asked a BATV technician at one of the council meetings I attended why the broadcast sound was so poor. And his simple response to me was, the speakers aren't close enough to their microphones for us to pick up what they're saying. So in order to keep us transparent and keep the public knowledgeable of what's going on, we can see you, but we can't hear you or understand you. Bottom line. Over the past several days, I've had the opportunity to watch CLTV's broadcast of the Van Dyke trial. As you are aware, the judge has complete control over the courtroom, as does the council's chairperson have complete control over this council meeting. The first thing the judge says when a witness enters the witness box to present their testimony is to advise the witness that both the witness chair and the witness's microphone are adjustable, and the witness is instructed to get into a position where everybody in the courtroom can hear the witness, and his or her testimony will be properly recorded. Makes sense to me. And if that witness should move away from the microphone during their testimony, the judge steps in and says, you're not close enough to that microphone for everyone to With that said, my recommendation, because where there's a problem in my mind, I've got to have a possible solution. Otherwise, I'm wasting your time. With that said, my recommendation to the council's chair is that, as part of the each meet, meeting's opening chair comments, after the pledge, or wherever you wish to put it, the chair advises the council members that when given the floor to speak, to make comments, or when speaking, the council member is to position himself or herself no further than six to eight inches away from their functional mic. Failure to assume the proper speaking position will result in the member's loss of previously granted floor privilege. So if you're not able to speak into your microphone, and you can't let us hear it on the broadcast, then your floor privilege to make your comments pulled back. You're now shut down until you move up. I must say, I was watching Comcast, the meeting of 9/17, and I almost didn't come tonight because I could hear everything that everybody was saying. It was great. I could hear everything. But that was maybe an outlier. I don't know. But many times, I will not be able to understand or hear what you folks are talking about, and it's important to me to know what's going on and what you're trying to do and looking for our vote or whatever. So I respectfully submit this to you folks for consideration, and I am open to the chair's, chairperson's response to an implementation of my recommendation for improving meeting transparency.
Well, on behalf of the city council, I thank you for coming down. I thank you for raising the subject, and I appreciate your suggestions on how we should proceed. And I think they're all very good, and we will try, hopefully, with this reminder that this is what we need to do as far as everybody speaking into the microphone. As you may have noticed, many times, the bigger problem is people in the audience want to stand up in their place or just sit in their chair and yell at us up here. And I know that's very difficult then for people to hear, because like yourself, I go home sometimes and just watch it to see what, how it comes out, and I've noticed that. As you may remember, we had the big roomful here last year over the Campana annexation and, not annexation, redevelopment, and there was a number of people who wanted to fire sidebar comments at us after one speaker got done or another. That was very problematic, and several times, myself or whoever was running the meetings at those nights had to intervene and say, you know, we're not hearing you, it has to be done better, and, you know, at one point, I even had the police in here threatening to, because they were yelling some stuff that shouldn't have been said at a public meeting. So, you know, I appreciate this, and this is kind of a work in progress, and I don't know if we'll ever really get it totally in place, but hopefully, we get, most people find and try to follow the suggestions of how to better do this.
Well, it's very important, Mayor, that we understand and hear what you're saying.
Right.
Otherwise, I flip the channel.
Right.
And I'll go watch the Food Network or something. But I want to know what's going on.
Right.
And it's important to me, and as I said earlier with the Van Dyke trial, you're in charge of what happens in this committee room. Whoever's sitting in that chair is in charge.
Right.
And in the courtroom, there are police, and if somebody's out of line, they're out. Bottom line. So I kind of look at it that you're in charge.
Right.
Okay? Well, thank you very much. I appreciate the thought.
Thank you.
Your Honor, comment?
Alderman Brown?
I just want to thank Charlie for coming down tonight because he actually lives in, Drew lives in my ward, and he stopped over at the house, what was it, Charlie, Saturday, Sunday, whatever day it was?
When the garage door was open, I knew you were home.
He warned me, whenever the garage door's open, he's going to stop, so I got to keep the garage door closed now.
[laughter]
But he brought this up, and he's absolutely right. I mean, we've all heard it from different people in the community, and we're all guilty of it, and we all need to pay more attention to what we're doing, because if we're going to be on BATV, we've got to do what we need to do. We've often talked about, you know, should we be getting better mics, should be getting some other kind of sound system, and the fact of the matter is, there's nothing wrong with what we have. We just need to use it properly. And we don't want something that's going to pick us up if we're going to be back here like this and clearing our throat.
Mm-hmm.
We want to be able to be heard when we're sitting here addressing the committee, or the council, or the people in the audience. So I thank you, Charlie, for coming down.
Okay, thanks, Dave.
Thank you. Anybody else this evening? Okay, moving to item number seven, we're going to have a presentation from the Bulldogs Unleashed Committee, and Steve is making his way up here. I would just like to publicly thank them for what has been a truly outstanding summer season of unique feature and art in our community. Few things get seemingly as much comment, very favorable comment, as the, I think this is what, the second time we've done this.
Right.
And it is a real shot in the arm to Batavia, and what I particularly enjoyed was a couple times during the season, I was out for whatever reasons, and a number of people that came through on the bike trails, I had a couple stop and say they lived in, in River Forest, and they were out, and they didn't realize that stuff like this existed anymore, and how it was a throwback to the Norman Rockwell era and all this other stuff. So I just wanted you to let you know, you've got a pretty good fan base out there of people who really greatly appreciate what was done, and the group that I see sitting there in the second row is, a lot of the hard work that went into this was accomplished by these men and women, and I just want to thank you publicly on behalf of the community and the city council for really doing something very special and meaningful for Batavia and making it something we can all be proud in. So Steve McKenna.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve McKenna from the Batavia Parks Foundation. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council, for the opportunity to update y'all on the Bulldogs Unleashed Project, and gives me a chance to wear my red blazer one more time. The 2018 version of Bulldogs Unleashed is coming to an end, and it was a great summer. Lots of stories, just like the mayor just mentioned, just beyond the financial rewards of the program really, really reflect well in our community, and it makes it a lot of fun. September 15th, we had our celebration and auction. That was a lot of great fun. If you haven't seen the video of the competition for the Time Traveler Dog, you can still check it out on Bulldogs Unleashed's Facebook page. That was pretty, pretty amazing. That dog actually went for $8,000, and it's still in town, I believe. I know the neighbors of the Martins, I think, have it, so hopefully, we'll be able to see it from time to time. The Bulldogs Unleashed Project produced approximately about $71,000. That will be shared evenly between Batavia Foundation for Educational Excellence, Batavia Public Library Foundation, and the Batavia Parks Foundation. We still have a few more odds and ends that we're doing, but that's kind of the neighborhood that'll end up. Including the 2011 version, that's nearly $150,000 that has been, or will be put back into our community through the schools, library, and parks. Needless to say, and, sorry, be put back to our community thanks to our iconic bulldog. Needless to say, the projects like this require a lot of hands and a lot of creativity. First, I want to thank some of my partners on the steering committee, Jan Wright, Dee James, Joanne Spitz, George Sheets, Elizabeth Larson, Sharon Mitchell, and Ashley Murtaugh. All three foundations were well represented in this very collaborative effort. Also, we had some very active and helpful partners over the 16 months. The park district, the library, and the school district all committed and contributed time and resources to ensure our success. As the Parks Foundation was responsible for logistics, I do want to call out a great thank you to Eric Locker and Kim Hansen and the park district crew as they cheerfully responded to our many requests to move dogs around. We would be nowhere without a very active and organized marketing committee. Hopefully, you all enjoyed the social media and the other media opportunities there. Again, that was led by Britta McKenna, and representatives from all our partners was on that committee. So if there's any of those folks here, please stand. Ollie, right, so thank you very much. Again, all the, all of the partner organizations represented on our marketing committee, and they did a fantastic job. I would like to thank also the business community, the help of Batavia Main Street, Batavia Chamber of Commerce, Water Street Studio, and many community business leaders. We were able to extend the reach of the Bulldogs Unleashed Project and provide different ways for folks to get involved with the effort. I would like to thank Kyle and Marcia Boyce at Boyce Body Works. They clear-coded all the dogs for us, and when you're dealing with artists, the schedules kind of get a little crazy, so appreciate their patience and flexibility. And also wanted to thank Michael Barton for all the photography that he did for us. Their donation of time and resources certainly is greatly appreciated. And lastly, I wanted to thank the city of Batavia for its participation and support this go-around. They helped to ensure the dogs were in safe locations, created an interactive map for the marketing folks to use. They certainly helped to market and promote the project, and actually, two city of employee citizens were artists for three of the most popular dogs. Additionally, the city sponsored a 44-inch dog that is proudly on display in the South Plaza. It was painted by Chris Cudworth, and the work demonstrates many of the features that make Batavia such a great place to live. So it'll be here from, for now until eternity, I guess, showing off our community as, as the bulldog represents us. On behalf of the three beneficiary foundations, we certainly thank the mayor and city council for your support in our project. I would be remiss if I did not thank the artists who participated and shared their amazing talents with the community and its visitors. Thank you for your creativity and enthusiasm. As we wrap up 2018 campaign, we still have some merchandise available to the public, and yes, we have a few of the white, black, and red small puppies in the pound to be adopted. We're hosting a Puppies on the Porch sale on Saturday, October 13th, from 9:00 to noon at 512 North Avenue in Batavia. T-shirts, note cards, and event supplies will also be available for sale while they last. Look for details on the bulldog's social media, Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter, and on our website at www.bulldogsunleashed.org to stop up, stock up on 2018 memories just in time for the holidays. And as an encore, be on the lookout after the holidays for a documentary by Jim Dillenberg to peek behind the scenes and relive this year's doggone fun, so keep an eye out for that. And finally, truly, we wanted to thank the Batavia community for, again, embracing Bulldogs Unleashed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Now for some more good news, we're going to go to item number eight, which is a presentation of the, by the Batavia Fire Department on their newly received ISO Class 1 rating. Chief Dyke.
Hello, everyone. Earlier this year, the Insurance Services Office, also known as ISO, came out and reevaluated our community. They were here for, I think about two or three days, and they evaluate everything that has to do with fire suppression. So they evaluate the fire department, our dispatch services, and our water distribution When they're all done, they come up with a classification for your community, and it's on a scale of one to 10, one being the best that you can be as far as fire suppression, and 10 being the worst. For many years, we were a Class 3 community, and then in 2013, we became a Class 2 community. And now, I was just notified a couple weeks ago that, starting on January 1st, we are going to be a Class 1 ISO community. So we're very proud of that, and let me tell you a little bit about what goes into getting to be a Class 1. First off, they evaluate the dispatches and how we're dispatched. So they went over to Tricom, they looked at their CAD system, their computer-aided dispatch, they looked at how they're able to connect up with LAN lines and, and the wireless phone lines, how to be able to isolate where people are calling from, the historical data that might come from that phone. They also look at the, how they communicate with the agencies that they dispatch, and they're able to locate the vehicles out there. They look at the, how they're able to communicate with other dispatch agencies. And then they also look at, for Tricom, they look at the telecommunications to see how they're functioning. Are they able to get the calls out efficiently, their training, and their quality assurance? So that all accounts for about 10% of the grading out there, and we're very proud to say that them and the water department and the fire department all did very well on it. And Nicole was going to be here, she's the director of Tricom, and I was going to acknowledge her, but she isn't here. 40% of the grading comes from the water department, and what they look at is, they look at our water main capacities out there, especially in the business and the industrial areas. They look at our emergency supplies and how we're able to get water in an emergency, and they also look at our hydrants, our distribution of our hydrants, the maintenance and the testing of the hydrants. And our water department did very well out there, and I give all that credit to Gary Holman, to Jeremy Barkhuy from the water department. They did a very nice job. And then the last part of it is the fire department, which is the biggest part. 50% of it comes from the fire department. They come out there, they spend a couple days with us, they look at how many fire engines we have, how many ladder trucks we have, they look at where we locate them. They also look at all the equipment that are on all of our vehicles and all the equipment that we bring to the scene. They determine whether or not we maintain it, whether we do the annual testing on it. They look at our training program, the, how many certificates all of our firefighters have, our driving program, hazmat awareness, our recruits, how we train our recruits. They also look at our pre-plans for all of our industrial and our businesses in town. We have pre-plans for each one of them. And then they also look at our records to see how well we maintain them. They look at our standard operating procedures and whether or not we use the National Incident Management System, which we do. Then they look at our call history, and they go back a year or two, and they look at how many people we send to, to a fire in order to put out the fire. They've looked at all of our equipment and our vehicles, but they, now they want to see whether or not we got enough people to put out the fire out there. So that's where, what we have is a combination department, and it really come, it really worked out well for us. We have full-time personnel that supply the, the, the regular firefighters on a daily basis out there, and they provide the backbone for our department. You have the paid-on call that supplement the manning out there, and then when we get calls, they also come back for those calls and add the additional manning for that. And we also have our contract medics, which are also certified firefighters. And then on top of that, what they also count is the personnel that we get from automatic aid coming from our neighboring communities. So we have automatic aid agreements with all of our neighboring communities, from Geneva to North Aurora to Elburne to West Chicago to Sugar Grove, and if they respond at the same time that we respond to one of our fires, which they do, then we get to count their personnel as part of the suppression capabilities out there. They also look at our fire prevention program, they look at the codes that we adopt and whether or not we enforce them, they look at our fire inspections program out there, the fact that we go out and we inspect most of the businesses yearly, and they also look at how our plan review process. And then they look at our public education, whether or not we go out to the schools to do, educate them on fire safety, which we do. And then they also look at our fire investigation program. So out of the 50,000 departments that they evaluate every year, we are one of about 300 departments that have gotten a Class 1 rating. So we are in the top of 1% of the nation for our fire suppression capabilities, and we're very proud of that, like I said earlier. But a lot of that work comes from our firefighters, and I got to say, I think we have some of the best firefighters out there. They work hard, they are very committed to our community, and they truly care about it, and they, and they go the extra mile out there, and I think that's part of what ISO saw out there. In particular, I want to thank Deputy Chief Hansen. He spent over a month, maybe even closer to three months, putting, collecting all the data, putting it all together into charts and statistics and everything like that to give to the ISO guy when he came out. He did a very nice job, and I'm thankful for that. Also, finally, I'm thankful for the, for the support that the council gives us. Without your support and, and the funding that you give us, we wouldn't be able to do this and achieve the, the rating that we have, so. Any questions?
Chief, one of the things, number one, congratulations. This really is a tremendous impact on Batavia, and I think there will be potentially some insurance reduction benefits for some businesses and whatever. Is that true?
What they do is they, they provide a rating, like I said, and then their rating is given to insurance companies, and then the insurance companies can determine the
as my years as mayor here, and I know ISO does come in and really kind of crawls through our community and figures it all out. I can remember early meetings having with them where they were concerned about specifically some of the weakness of the water system over on the southwest side of town. And we spent a lot of money, and we, we placed all that and got that in, so obviously, they noted that with great interest. I'm specifically remembering a conversation I had with the late Chief Bud Richter many years ago, when he was chief. His crowning achievement, he thought, was in 1949 or 50, he got the city council to agree to hire full, three full-time paid firemen so he could have one on duty each day. So he had one guy in the, in the fire station, and when he got that, he got an ISO Class 5 rating. And that was midway up the ladder. And I remember him sharing with me, he says, "Well, I hope I started something here that maybe someday we can get up there a little bit higher." And I think if, he's shining down upon us tonight if he's up there watching and listening to this, thinking, "Well, we finally got there." And, and I will give him some of the credit, because he, he brought, Batavia had a paid fireman in before either Geneva or St. Charles, and he was very proud of that fact that we were the first in the, in the central part of Kane County to have one paid fireman on duty. And then he had 20 volunteers that were behind him. So we've come a long way, and through your leadership, we certainly, I think, have gone to the top of the pile. So thank you for all you've done to make this a reality, and certainly thank all the members of the department here for all they do and continue to do. And as I noted in the opening invocation, as one who carries a Fire Department pager with him, I am vividly aware of all the increased business that you guys seem to be having. I'm aware of a call you had this weekend where you went out about 6:30 on Saturday night, and you were out till well after midnight, kind of watching over a situation. So, I mean, this is not an easy job, it's, you never know from one day to the next, or one moment to the next, what's going to come at you on the radio. And we always seem to rise to the occasion and handle it in the most professional manner that saves time and energy and money and probably a few lives along the way. So, thank you for all you guys continue to do. Any comments from the council? Alderman Sharon?
I'll just pitch in, you mentioned that this helps businesses, but many carriers will use this in, in calculating homeowners, you know, their homeowners' insurance rates also. So this will help residents as well. But I was Googling what percentage, and I, I couldn't find it, and then you came up with 300 out of 50,000, less than 1%. I knew it was impressive, but I didn't know it was that impressive, so congratulations.
Thank you. Alderman Shamsen?
So Class 3 and Class 2 are very impressive as well.
They are, they're very good.
What do you think made the difference this time to push us over into a Class 1?
We, we, we have enough, I think it's our auto, it really counts heavily on personnel. And so our auto aid agreements and the fact that we have callbacks that come, or paid-on call that come back, I think all those things are, are big factors that, that add up to the amount of people that go to a fire. And so, like I said, personnel are a big factor on the fire scene, and they count for a lot of points on there.
Alderman Callahan?
So when you went in 2013, I remember several of us were on council, and it was kind of a big deal then. You'd been a 3 for a long time, and then you got 2. And being in the insurance industry, I know the relevance of it, and just as Nick said. And I remember thinking at the time, wow, if they ever get a 1, and you did within five years, that is, that is so unbelievably phenomenal, and it is to the professionalism of your department and the other departments that you work with and Tricom. So, well-earned, congratulations.
Well, thank you.
Anybody else? I, I would just close, I mean, you don't run a quality operation like the Batavia Fire Department without one key component, and that's money. And hopefully, we've, we've done enough over the years to invest in the Fire Department and invest in hiring more personnel, and I would hope that citizens of Batavia see that and realize it for, this is a classic, clear example of them getting their true value in paying taxes for what you have done from here with this rating. Alderman Brown?
Just one more comment, and it's an observation that I've observed numerous times. When the chief talks about the commitment of his men and women on the, on the department, as you can see here tonight in the audience, we've got not only the people that are on call, or on duty tonight, but we've got an awful lot of his department that is not on duty, but they're committed to the department, they're committed to the city, they're down here tonight in support. And you see that every time anything happens with any type of recognition, promotion, new employee, anything that, that comes up with the department, they're very, very committed.
Thank you for an excellent job. Stay safe and keep up the great work.
Thank you very much.
Okay, item nine is the Chamber of Commerce. Holly, you're here tonight.
I am. Hopefully, I get a round of applause like that, too, but I, I mean, well, but my expectation's too high, so. Thank you all for giving me an opportunity to speak. I did want to make a couple of comments to things I heard today. All I heard that guy say is that he watches BATV, and that's a huge win. So there are people out there watching, it's a great organization, and man, they fight for, for everything that they put out. So, thank you for that acknowledgement, that was awesome. Next, I just wanted to mention to you some of the events that we have going on at the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. This Wednesday, thank you so much for, many of you have registered to join us for our harvest celebration. We are honoring our Donna Della Sassi Award recipient this year, Ms. Jamie Sam, who's right there in the audience. She gets the applause. And that is from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Marmion's Abbey Farms. If you haven't registered yet, let me know, we have a little bit of wiggle room there, but so far, we have about 140 people coming to celebrate Jamie. We have a ribbon cutting on Thursday for Wild Things Pet Services at 5:00 PM, and they're an at-home business, so they'll be celebrating at our offices, the old post office building in downtown. Batavia Women in Business Luncheon is on Tuesday, next Tuesday, the 9th, at 11:30 at Eagle Brook, and that is organized leaders are profitable leaders. So if you know anyone, and it's not just women only, anyone that you feel would benefit from learning about organization, please register to join us for that. We have a ribbon cutting for the Batavia Mothers Club, and they are combining that with their brownie bake-off. So please plan to join us on the 9th at 6:30 PM. That also is going to be hosted in our offices at, in the old post office building. BC Squared is our morning networking event, and that is on October 10th this month at 7:30 AM at the Comfort Inn and Suites in Geneva. On the 11th, we are doing a multi-chamber, actually 12-chamber progressive luncheon at Villa Olivia at 11:00 AM. And again, that's on the 11th. On the 17th, we have our networking at Water Street Studios, and the cause of the month is the VNA Health Center. And of course, I'm going to mention this weekend is Oktoberfest, so in downtown Batavia, 5th, 6th, and 7th should be an awesome weekend for Stein, I've been hoisting and practicing to win the Stein, hoisting competition, but that will be here in downtown Batavia. So look for a great fun time, drinking, eating, and lots of entertainment, and a, a lot of kids' activities this year. So congratulations to Batavia Main Street for putting on another awesome event here in Batavia. Any questions for me? If not, please check out all of our, I was only, I don't want to take up too much of your time, I was only able to get through two weeks of October with what I just listed. But any other events, look at our website, bataviachamber.org. You can look at upcoming events and register online. That's it. Thank you.
Questions to Jamie?
Holly?
Holly? All right. Item 10 is a presentation by the Batavia Depot Museum Project. And Doris, are you doing this? Doris from our Historic Preservation Commission's here, but she's not in that role tonight. She's here as a member of the Historical Society, I believe.
Yes, I am. Before I begin that presentation, though, I would like to say that if you ask the children in my block where I live why the Fire Department should have a number one rating, it would be because for nine years in a row, they have sent a truck to our block party and allowed the kids to climb all over it and answer a zillion questions for them. So thank you very much. My name is Doris Shear, and I'm representing the Batavia Historical Society and the Depot Expansion Project. I want to tell you about a very exciting event that we have coming up on Saturday, October 13th, and that is the Clark Family Estate Sale and the Batavia Depot Expansion Project Benefit. Now, you know where the showroom is, out at Avenue Motors at Randall and McKee Street? That showroom is completely filled with objects from the Clark family, the entire family, going back four generations, some of it. Plus, the Batavia Historical Society will have objects there, too. At 9:00 to 10:00 in the morning, the sale will be just for the Historical Society members and their guests. From 10:00 till 4:00, it's open to the public. And then from 4:00 to 5:00, there's going to be an auction of the memorabilia and some of the more valuable artifacts that are there. And then at 5:00, we're going to have a special tribute to John Clark and the Clark family for their contribution to the City of Batavia through their personal work, but through Avenue Chevrolet, which they ran from 1930 to 2011. Four generations of Clark families have done that. Now, what's at this sale? Anything you want. Let me tell you, there is tools, there's probably 100 hurricane lamps, if you know what those are, there's dishes, pots, pans, Swedish paraphernalia, Christmas ornaments, furniture, historically valuable artifacts that the Historical Society is selling. So please do come out and support this sale. John Clark has been generous enough, he is donating 50% of the proceeds from his sale to the expansion project, and then the Historical Society gets 100% of everything that they sell. And like I said, there are unique things, and I left a brochure on everybody's chair, on the table in front of your chair, describing it in more detail. But I do want to thank the City of Batavia, Mayor Shelkey. His wife Linda has done an absolutely tremendous job in helping with this sale. In fact, if she wasn't there, there wouldn't be one, let me tell you that. But you've always been so supportive of the Historical Society, and I know that you recognize the importance of getting more space for all of the artifacts and display area, office area, that we are going to need at the Depot Museum. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Alderman Brown?
I have one question, the hour that only the members can...
And guests.
And guests can bid on things.
Like, if you want to come, you can say you're my guest.
Okay, so, well, I'm a member, so I'm okay, I can go.
That's right, he is, and so is Marty, and so is Mayor Shelkey.
But if, if you wanted to participate in that early hour, would you be able to purchase a membership at that time and then participate?
Yes.
There you go.
Yes, you would. And that's the other thing that I would encourage, if you are not a member of the Historical Society, I should have brought forms with me tonight, I was negligent in that aspect. But you can, you can join up online, and it's, lifetime membership is $200, and annual membership is $20.
Yeah, just a comment on that, besides being a worthy cause to support the museum and everything that they do over there, you do get a, is it a quarterly or monthly newsletter, Doris?
Quarterly.
Quarterly newsletter, and it's really, if you have never seen one, it's really something that you, you want to get. It's, it's very informative, some of these articles that are written in there about the history of some of the families and some of the businesses and everything that have, were born and raised in this town, and, and it's just a, it's, it's worth the investment into the membership itself.
Thank you, Dave.
Well, Doris, we thank you for coming down tonight. Certainly, I, this is a, a kind of a one-time, a once-in-a-lifetime experience for Batavia to have this opportunity, because I've certainly been out there and toured it myself and seen what's being offered. I mean, we even got some Ethan Allen Hubbard furniture out there. So, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different pieces of Batavia kind of been brought together from a variety of fronts, and there's a lot of, you know, old advertising and knickknacks and coffee cups and milk bottles and all kinds of interesting sagas of Batavia's past. And so if anybody's looking for a unique Christmas gift to give to an old-time Batavian, that would be the opportunity to do it.
You're right, you're right.
Alderman Shamsen, you want to make?
Just curious, do you accept cash, charge, or checks? The reason I ask, I almost lost out on a 1946 General Electric Model 202, radio-edited estate sale. Thank God they took credit cards.
We're taking credit cards, we're taking cash, and we will take your check.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Is there a catalog online for this?
No, there's, no.
Just all?
There's, the entire warehouse is filled with objects for sale, you could not catalog them.
Okay.
So, it's a Batavia moment of Batavia unlike we've ever done before, so. I just would encourage everybody to come out and see it, because it, it is a rare glimpse of a lot, so much of our proud past and the things that were made in Batavia, and industries and stories and pictures and a little bit of everything there, so.
Yeah, I think it's, it's sort of a happy-sad situation for John Clark, because he's getting rid of a lot of family history. So that part of it is very sad to him, I believe. But we really appreciate everything that Avenue Motors has done. For instance, when I was a senior in high school, they provided the convertibles that the Queens rode in in the homecoming parade. So, there's many ways that he's contributed to the city. But I thank you all for your support.
Thank you, we'll see you out there.
You bet. Thank you.
Okay, we're moving then to item number 11, which is a presentation on the 40th anniversary of the Kiwanis Club of Batavia.
Hi, I'm Sue Bauer, and I joined Kiwanis Club in 1988. They were founded seven years prior by a large group of men here in the City of Batavia. A lot of our aldermen and businessmen were the founders of this group. Their first projects were Valley Sheltered Workshop and supporting them and the growth of their facility, and the Batavia Food Pantry. Their prime goal was to serve the children here in Batavia and in the world. After 10 years, in their infinite wisdom, they decided to allow women to join the club. The club now is mostly women, we could use a few guys, but our goal has not changed. In 1987, David Booth approached me, the high school principal, asking if I would be interested in starting a key club for Kiwanis at Batavia High School. Little did I know what I was getting into. We started with five students, we grew rapidly. We started with five students, we grew rapidly. Of those five, one suggested the Mr. BHS pageant, at which point, when I presented it to David Booth, he said, "Do you want to keep your job?" And I sort of looked at him and said, "Oh, it'll be okay." Luckily, it was, and it's still a big part of Key Club today. Our club family has expanded. We've gone from Kiwanis to Kiwanis and Key Club. Then, we added a Builders Club at the middle school, and now, we have three K kids, one at Hooverwood, one at Louise White, and our newest one at Grace McWayne. And this week, we got a call from Alice Gusterson wanting to start a K Kids at their I can't tell you what a wonderful organization this is. It has touched more lives in our community, and I'm talking young lives. Jamie Sam, you all know her, she's one of my former Key Clubbers, active in our community, sat on this alderman board. So, right now, I, well, in just a minute, I'm going to let Natalie tell you a little bit about what our Key Club's doing right now. My job is to tell you that this month is Kiwanis Family Month. When we say Family Month, boy, do we mean family. We do just about everything together, from the young kids, the third, fourth, and fifth graders, through our 86-year-olds. Last night, we had a banquet to celebrate our 40th anniversary and Key Club's 30th. So, hopefully, this is an organization that will go on for a long, long time. If any of you are interested or have a spouse interested, look us up, because we'd love to grow. Natalie Bach is with the Batavia High School Key Club, and I think I'll let her say a little bit about what Key Club does. I will tell you that even the other communities surrounding us come to our Key Clubbers and ask them for help, and some of them have Key Clubs in their own community, so I think that tells you a lot. It is the best Key Club in all of Illinois and eastern Iowa, and they have trophies and plaques and all kinds of awards to prove it. So, I'm going to turn it over to Natalie Bach.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm Natalie Bach. I'm the current president at Batavia High School's Key Club, as well as I'm the lieutenant governor, so I serve through Illinois and eastern Iowa Key Club with the schools around us. Key Club is a student-led volunteer organization at our school, so we bring opportunities to the students so that they're aware of what's going on in the community and how they can get involved and help out. We serve not only our home, but our school and community, as I've mentioned. We have, right now, it's our largest membership year yet. We have 208 Key Club members at Batavia High School, which is a really good accomplishment for us, it helps to get even more involved in the community than we already were. And some of our biggest events are Mr. BHS, as Mrs. Bauer briefly mentioned. Mr. BHS is a mock male beauty pageant at our school where the boys compete, and we raise money for Kiwanis Neuroscience Research Foundation, and this past year, we raised just over $11,000 for that organization. We also do a fall and a spring blood drive, and it's really great to see how many kids come out and help with that. They're always great, a great success, and we also have volunteers who help out if they're not able to donate blood, so we really try to help them in as many ways possible as we can. But we also assist the park district and school with many different initiatives, which is really cool as well. We also provide leadership opportunities for students, so there's many ways to get involved, whether it's our exec board, we have many positions, we also have committee chairs and class representatives, so it's really good for students if they want to become a leader, it's a good stepping stone for them, whether it's being a class representative all the way up to our exec board, which is really cool for students to get that opportunity. And we also work closely with our Kiwanis, as Mrs. Bauer briefly mentioned, and as well as the rest of the K family, so we're really making sure that even at a young age at the elementary schools, that our kids are learning the importance of volunteering and what it means to get involved in your community, which I think is super important for them to learn, and it's really cool to be able to help out with them at a high school level and go to the younger schools for that. But we're really excited to have our best year out of Key Club and have so many members willing to come out and volunteer for such a great cause, so thank you.
Does anybody have any questions about Kiwanis Key Club, anything that we do?
Well, I just want to pay tribute to you, your organization, and the 40 years that you've been in this town. I am aware of many special projects that you've undertaken and help you've done, and this really has made our town a greater and grander place because of the efforts of the Batavia Kiwanis. So, we have a proclamation that we would like to present, and I'm going to ask Alderman Atech if she would read it for us, please.
The proclamation reads as follows. Whereas Kiwanis International is one of the largest service organizations in the world with more than 600,000 members of all ages and abilities in more than 80 nations, and whereas the members of the Kiwanis Club of Batavia are devoted to improving the world one child and one community at a time by seeking primacy to the human and spiritual rather than the material values of life, whereas in addition to improving the lives of children in Batavia and communities around the world, Kiwanis Club members promote the development of community leaders, positive role models, intercultural understanding and cooperation, and opportunities for fellowship, personal growth, professional development, and community service. And whereas the first Kiwanis Club started its service in Detroit, Michigan, USA in 1915, and the Kiwanis Club of Batavia was formed on October 1st, 1978, and whereas Kiwanis educates youth, the Key Club of Batavia High School was formed in 1988 as part of Key Club International, the largest high school service organization in the world, empowering high school students to lead and serve by cultivating leadership skills and performing community service. And whereas four additional student leadership programs were formed in the Batavia Public Schools, providing service leadership opportunity to our youngest neighbors, the Builders Club at Rotola Middle School in 2007, K Kids Club at Hooverwood Elementary in 2009, the K Kids Club at Louise White Elementary in 2017, the K Kids at Grace McWayne Elementary in 2017, and whereas the Kiwanis Club of Batavia plans to increase availability of youth service programs by partnering with remaining elementary schools in the Batavia Public School District, and whereas the service provided by the Kiwanis Club of Batavia will continue to have a positive impact on our community and citizens. And now, therefore, I, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of Batavia, Illinois, by signing of this official proclamation, do hereby proclaim October 1st, 2018, as Kiwanis Family Day, and hereby call on all citizens of Batavia to support the members of this organization and to make themselves aware of Kiwanis International, whose members this day are providing meaningful service to our homes, schools, and community. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor. I move that we approve the proclamation and accept it as read.
Second.
Motion is second for the approval of the Kiwanis proclamation, any discussion? Kirk Colerole?
Atech?
Aye.
Chancet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Salvati?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
Aye.
Meitzler?
Aye.
Malley?
Aye.
Uer?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Rosato?
Aye.
Motion's approved by a vote of 13 a's, no no's, one a's. So, on behalf of the grateful community, it's my honor to present this to the Batavia Kiwanis, and thank you for your great efforts, Key Club, and everything you do, and we're very, very proud to have you as part of our town, so thank you, and may this be just the sign of another 40 great years in the future, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. One person sitting right back here is the second advisor that Key Club has ever had. I was the first for 15 years, she's beaten my record. Marnie Heim, math teacher, or math, English teacher at Batavia High School. So, thank you very much, we appreciate the honor.
Thank you. All right, we've taken 13 and 14 off the agenda, so we'll move to 15, which is the administrative report.
Okay, I have just a couple of items I'd like to share with you, some of the projects that Public Works is engaged in right now. Electric crews have begun the pole relocation work for the 2019 Main Street Reconstruction Project. Work has resumed on the riverbank stabilization project, the utility protection work that was begun earlier in the summer. Also, landscape and driveway restoration work is underway on Geese Road in Ward 1, and you recall that we were working on one of our deep wells, well 6, and the pump, although it was younger than well 8, needed a significant amount of reconstruction. Well, the pump in well 8 has been pulled, and it appears to be in good condition, so sometimes the surprises are, we're pleasantly surprised. So, only minor rehabilitation work will be needed on that well. And the first contractor has begun work on the northeast substation, and this work will continue to be ongoing throughout the next year as well, but it's important work to improve the reliability at that particular substation. Also, as things turn to fall, and we see leaves starting to fall and brush needing to be picked up, I just thought I'd let everybody know that the brush pickup, the next brush pickup is September 10th for the east side, and September 17th for the west side, and the leaf pickup, the first one, will be October 22nd for the east side and October 29th for the west side. There's a Committee of the Whole meeting tomorrow night, Tuesday, October 2nd, at 7:00 PM, and other than a few matters on the consent agenda, the only other matter is the Strategic Action Plan. And then, also, on October 8th, at 7:00 PM, we will have a Home Rule informational meeting, which will take place right here in council chambers. There will be a panel of individuals to answer residents' questions about Home Rule. That panel will include myself, Peggy Colby, our finance director, Dan Yule, our chief of police, and also our city attorney, Kevin Drendel. Residents should be receiving in the mail tomorrow or over the course of the next few days, a pamphlet, which is not only an invitation to this meeting, but also some basic information about Home Rule. No matter how residents may vote on that November 6th, we want to make sure that people understand what Home Rule is. And so, from the city's perspective, it is important that we, we're not taking any position of advocacy, one way or another, we simply want to share the facts of what Home Rule is, and what the city of Batavia has done with Home Rule since it has it, and what the effects might be of a change or a loss of Home Rule status. So, there will be an opportunity for people who attend the meeting to ask questions and to be answered by the panel, as well as a brief presentation on Home Rule. BATV is going to be there and broadcasting that meeting live. They will also be posting a recording of the presentation after the meeting. And then, through the questions that are asked by the audience, we will also create a question-and-answer document with some detailed responses to any of the questions that we receive at that meeting. That's all that I have, unless anybody has a question for me.
Any questions, Laura?
Don't we have a picture to look at tonight, with a nice red shirt?
Use the mic.
Don't we have a picture of a nice red shirt to look at tonight?
I can bring that up if you'd like.
Sure. Interesting. It's our neighbor to the north.
I was going to talk about that in the mayor's report.
Sorry.
We can segue to that, I bring that picture up.
It'll spring you into it.
Yeah.
Why don't we go through committee reports while she's finding it?
Well, I think it'll be here in just a second. I'm trying to keep us on topic.
Well, I wanted you to get the, you know, you were going to talk about it, so the timing would have been perfect.
We'll talk about it when we get there.
Let me just close out of my outlook, so my emails aren't popping up during it.
So, what this is, is, as you know, Batavia this past weekend played its 100th game against Geneva, and so, it was suggested that the two superintendents of schools were going to do a bet on it, and so, they suggested that the two mayors should do a bet on it. And so, I suggested to Mayor Burns that what would be, an appropriate bet would be that the loser, losing mayor would go to the next city council meeting and wear the colors of the winning school. And so, this is what we have, and I commend the mayor for it. I would point out, tell you a little story, I worked today, and I had a blue shirt on, and I went home this afternoon and changed out of my blue shirt and put my white shirt on. But in tribute to the sportsmanship and the camaraderie and the sense of fair play and good feelings that has marked this 100 years of Batavia's run, just to be a good sport about the whole thing, I wore a tie tonight that's a little bit blue and it has a little white stripe in it. So, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to speak a little bit to, you know, reach out to the other side and say, you know, onward and upward with it, and we'll continue to play the game in an honorable and fair fashion. So, I thank Mayor Burns for so admirably displaying the bet, and he did pay his due penance, so, well, we're honored tonight to be able to show this to you. Somebody else want to turn in? Alderman Wolf, you want to make any comments?
I'll just make the comment that the last two years, it's been 90 to nothing against Batavia. 41 this year and 49 last year, and they haven't scored a point. So, they may hold the overall lead, but the last eight games have been ours.
And the meeting's still going on?
Mm-hmm, and Kevin still has the shirt on. Maybe he likes it.
No comment.
All right.
What is the overall series?
Okay, let's go to committee reports. Alderman Brown, committee of development, anything?
No report, Your Honor, just a few meetings to announce. Our city administrator, we already talked about tomorrow evening's Committee of the Whole, that starts at 7:00. The next plan commission is Wednesday, October 3rd, that also starts at 7:00. A couple items on their agenda. One is a public hearing for the conditional use permit for medical offices and clinic. Petitioners, Geneva Family Practices, and that's to be located at 815 North Randall Road, that's in front of the Walmart there, I believe, in one of the outbuildings. And then, the other item is the approval of a preliminary plat and final plat of subdivision for MIF Batavia Subdivision, that's at the location of 1,100 North Redent Road. That's all I think that they have on their agenda. Historic preservation is scheduled for Monday, October 8th at 5:30. And on our agenda here, it says for the next Committee of the Whole on October 9th, there are no items, so does that mean we're not having a Committee of the Whole meeting?
Um, no, it does not.
I'm sorry?
No, it does not.
So, we are going to have a Committee of the Whole meeting on Tuesday, October 9th?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay, Government Services, Alderman Atech?
Well, I'll mention again that tomorrow night, we're going to discuss the strategic plan, and this is a good time for anyone from the public, and this hasn't been brought to the council before, and anyone from the public that has input, a good time to come. I know a couple people have asked me, when would be a good time to come and address the council on this? So, tomorrow night's it, and the meeting starts at 7:00.
Okay. City Services, Alderman Wolf?
Just a reminder, as we get into leaf and brush collection, that they belong on the parkway, not on the street. Same thing with, a lot of people tend to blow their grass and leaves into the street, that tends to be a little dangerous, especially for motorcycles or bicycles.
That tends to be a little dangerous, especially for motorcycles or bicyclists. We've noticed a few kids wipe out in the piles of leaves that are already in the gutters, so make sure that you keep those up on the parkways. That's it.
Okay. Public Utilities, Alderman O'Brien?
Nothing to report, Your Honor.
All right. Do we have other business from the city council this night? Well, a lot of the mayor's report got taken over when we brought that up, so I'll skip over that. I just do want to note that this coming weekend is the Oktoberfest, specifically down on North River Street. It's a very fun occasion, very community-oriented, and at 5:00 on Friday night, is now the third-year annual, I will be breaking open the first keg of beer, and I don't have the Super Bowl quarterback here with me this year like I did last year, but we will break open the keg of beer and get on with the party, and that generally is seriously a very nice party, and it allows a lot of... I'm told there's a high school class reunion that's even going to hold itself within the Oktoberfest versus having its own separate reunion. So, there's a lot of different activities going on, and I'm just very strongly encouraging us all to try to attend some of them, because it is a very community-minded event and one that I think speaks to, you know, Batavia coming together for a good time and to support some good causes. And so I just want to particularly thank Batavia Main Street and the Batavia Chamber of Commerce for their efforts to kind of put all this together and yet put another event of Batavia showing itself off in front of the world. And the more of that we can do, the better I think we will all be. We have had a very interesting year here. I don't know of another year in my tenure as mayor when we've had so many events that have been weather-impacted as we've had this year, starting with the 4th of July fireworks, which, as you may remember, got rained out, and going to last Friday or last week when we had the homecoming parade, we had rain, and then before the following week, between the infamous Batavia-Geneva game, we had rain. So every time we're having some big event in town, we get rain. So it wouldn't surprise me, this weekend with the Oktoberfest will get us a shower or two, too, but that's just the way, but we always overcome it, and we've had probably a dozen events this year that have been rained on, but we've been able to go forth and do them all. So I think that speaks, again, to the community spirit that we enjoy in Batavia. So, no further business. Alderman Brown, I entertain a motion for adjournment.
I move we adjourn the city council.
Second.
Kirk, take a voice vote?
All in favor?
Aye.